All right. Test. All right, that's on.
So her immune system is compromised.
You worry more about the doors than you are about the blasting. The doors aren't sealing for her.
Wow. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Anybody in the audience that plans to speak tonight, we would appreciate you signing in so we can spell your name correctly in the minutes. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Pittsburgh Planning Board Meeting, June 13, 2023. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Beverly Hood.
Present.
Deb Terrell.
Here.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks. Dave Robinson.
Present.
Barry McCracken.
Present.
Susan Lopez emailed and said she will not be able to make it this evening. Jose Arturo Brajas, absent. We have five members present. That is a quorum.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes for May 16?
Probably not, because I just got updated.
Okay. Well, if I could give a motion to approve the meeting or the meeting minutes for next month.
Just continue. Table it till next month.
Yeah. I move that we stand to the reading of those until next month, July, to our July meeting.
All second. So we have a motion by Chip Roarum and a second by Barry McCracken.
Just do it twice.
Roll call.
Okay. Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Dave Robinson.
Abstained.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Okay. We will cover that next month.
Communications.
Nothing.
City Council actions.
Yes, we had several items that were sent to City Council. We had the food truck park at 434 North Harrison. That was approved by the City Council at their first meeting in June, as was the gaming cafe for May's Lounge at the part of the Ricky Rockets Project out on East Court Street. We also had the landscape contractor down at Jeffrey and 7th. The City Council also approved that at their June 5 meeting. And lastly, we had a series of map amendments generally on South 3rd Street there to better match the existing zoning, which is residential to commercial, and that was also approved by City Council at their June 5 meeting.
Thank you. Unfinished business case PB 2022-11-2, continue public hearing to amend an existing conditional use at 1200 North Kennedy Drive to allow U-Haul to add propane sales and additional outdoor storage unit.
So this, oh, go ahead.
This case is going, the applicant is asking or requesting the case be to continue, be continued for another month. Can you be on the side?
Yes. So we did, we did have a good meeting on the site with the, with the developer and the mayor and Alderman and a couple of members from the planning board talking about the concerns, particularly as it relates to the property up on Kennedy Drive. They seemed to understand and appreciate our comments, and we're going to update and revise their drawings accordingly. However, their architect was on vacation for several weeks after that meeting, and so the drawings have not been revised yet, so they asked to continue it one more month.
Question, Mike, has there been any further conversation about the landscaping along Henry?
Um, I put it in my summary of the recommendations to them, but they wouldn't actually talk about it much, other than saying it's still important to do that. So I, I'm hoping to see that when they get the revised drawings back.
All right. So we need a motion to postpone the meeting till next month.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Dave Robinson. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Dave Robinson.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes. Next case PB 2023-4-5, continue public hearing on a request for a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of a bar tavern at 844 Fifth Avenue, Zone C2 by John Hogan. The applicant has also requested this may be continued next, next month as well. Do we give a motion?
I so moved that PB 2023-4-5 be continued for next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Dave Robinson and a second by Barry McCracken. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Dave Robinson.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Okay. That case is continued.
New business case PB 2023-4-1, request for a conditional use to construct a cell tower at the intersection of American Way and Harvard Drive by Buell Consulting, Zone I2. Will the applicant for this case please come forward? You can state your name, please.
Good evening. Woody Krog, K-R-O-G. I work for Buell Consulting. We're representing Tillman Infrastructure LLC in this conditional use application.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Proceed, please.
All right. Thank you for having me. Tillman Infrastructure proposes to construct a new telecommunications facility in the city of Cankey Key at the intersection of Harvard Drive and American Way. The proposed location aims to improve the quality of services for residents, visitors, and businesses by providing wireless carriers with a cost-effective solution to deploy their wireless technologies. The proposed site consists of 190-foot-tall galvanized steel self-support tower with an eight-foot lightning rod, which will be inside a landscaped 70-by-70 fence compound with related ground equipment, all within 100-by-100 lease area. There will be a 30-foot-wide access utility easement with a paved drive, parking, and turnaround area. The compound will be secured by a six-foot chain-link fence with barbed wire. The proposed tower will be able to accommodate up to three carriers with Verizon as an anchor tenant. The proposed location and surrounding properties to the south, east, and west are Zoned I2 Heavy Industrial in the city of Cankey Key, and to the north, the adjoining property is in the village of Bradley, which is residential. Though this is residential in a different jurisdiction, we are well over 700 feet away from, from that residential in the village of Bradley. The proposed, the parcel where the tower is proposed is currently undeveloped. The proposed site meets City of Cankey Key zoning requirements with a couple of exceptions, one being setback to property lines. We provided a engineering certification detailing that the tower will, in the, in the case of a failure, will not cross any property lines. The other issue is the tower type. Your ordinance calls for a monopole-type tower. We're proposing a lattice-work self-support type of tower. There's a couple of reasons for this. First and foremost is that economic reasons, it's more feasible to build a self-support tower at that height than a monopole. Also, it's, it's typically a self-support tower at that height is more structurally, has better structural integrity at that height than a monopole, and it also is easier for co-locators, future carriers, to add their equipment to a self-support tower. Considering this is in a heavy industrial district, we hope that you'll see fit to allow for these, those deviations. Also, there was some landscaping required, which we're happy to meet that requirement as well. So the proposed site is in the most suitable location, maximizes Verizon's coverage goals. Therefore, Tillman Infrastructure respectfully requests approval of this conditional use application for the new wireless telecommunications facility as proposed. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Krog, Deb Terrell here. On this aerial photo, can you tell me, I'm, I'm having trouble placing exactly where this is. What, what is this building here?
That is, I can tell you.
The building to the south is Cornerstone, if that's what you're asking about. I can't.
Cornerstone is the south. I forget, is it Penning House to the, to the east?
Oh, okay. Okay. I'm starting to place this now.
So the, the, the proposed tower location is in the southeast corner of the map you're looking at.
Okay.
Right near the intersection of Harvard and American Way.
Thank you.
It's, it's, you might have covered, just started by now, it's kind of a unique site because a good chunk of this property is actually in floodplain. I had actually talked to him about trying to move this back farther, but then when we saw where the floodplain was, he had to move it up closer to the corner to stay outside of the floodplain, so.
Again, orientation question. Chip Roarum, you know, there's a gently curving angled portion of your property. Is it Soldier Creek?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other north.
Okay. I, I have another question. This may be wrong. I'll tell you that in advance. I, I've, you know, heard stories in the recent months about people shooting at power, power subspace.
Sure.
You know, vandalism using high-power weapons. Is that a concern?
It is. It's happened. Usually it's in rural areas that it has happened, that I've seen in my 24 years in the business.
Yeah.
But sure, the target up in the air.
Do you do anything to, to provide surveillance of that?
Where, at trouble sites, the, the bigger problem that we have is theft, copper theft.
Yeah.
Because, of course, there's a lot of copper, a lot of grounding, so there's, so they're at, at trouble sites, if site, if a site develops into a problem site, they will install cameras. But obviously, shooting, that can be a lot part of the, the cameras gonna pick up.
I have another question, and it has to do with the landscaping. I'm somewhat confused by the, there seems to be a portion of your underground work that goes alongside of Harvard Drive, near the cornerstone property.
Sure.
And it looks to be, from what I can see, that that is on the cornerstone property.
Well, the, we're looking at the fiber coming in from Harvard Drive and American Way there.
Fairway, excuse me.
The power may come from, it may come from the west. I don't know if you're looking at the, there's a easement going to the west.
Yeah. On sheet C1. I'm seeing this. Looks like it's on the, now, I may be wrong. It's not, it's in the right way.
Yeah.
It's close enough to be in the right way.
Yeah.
It looked to me like it might have been on the.
Yeah, it'll be in the right way.
Okay. Thank you.
If we were going on someone else's property, we'd have to get easements, so.
And that's what I'm gonna ask you about.
We're gonna stay in the right way, yes.
Right. Right. Okay. That's not necessary, then it's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? If not, I will head and open up the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or discuss this case, you may come forward. Since that they're not, I will head and close the public hearing. Any communications on this?
No, no communications. Just a couple of things to add. Since we really haven't done a cell tower, I don't believe, since I've been here. The city does have a separate ordinance on this. I gave you guys a copy of that in your packets, chapter 37 of the code. And as the applicant has stated, they meet almost all the criteria in there. A couple of them they don't. One was the fall distances, and they've already provided engineer's certification that that shouldn't be an issue. And then it was the, the tower design. We forgot to add that note in our recommendation, so our recommendation really was to approve the request with landscaping along the south side of this, which he says he will do. And then just putting a note in the recommendation that we are varying from the setback criteria and the tower design criteria in that chapter 37, which that code does give us the ability to do within the context of a conditional use. So I would include that in your motion if you're so inclined to recommend approval of this. But, you know, I think in general, residents of town probably would like better, stronger coverage of cell service, and, you know, it's a growing demand thing, so. And this particular location, this property, because of the floodplain, doesn't have a lot of utility and potential use, so this will at least create some value out there and some practical use, so leave some staff's perspective comfortable with it.
Commissioners, are you ready to land?
Yeah.
I have one more question. Regarding the co-location issue and the third preference, you know, this, this is, where is the closest cellphone tower to this one?
Uh, to the west. About a half a mile.
A half mile west? And it says here under number three that according to the applicant, the proposed cell tower would not be economically or technologically feasible for co-location. Could you tell me why that is?
Verizon's already on that tower. They're looking to increase the coverage. Half a mile doesn't sound like a long ways, but in an urban area, it's a long ways for our cell, for cell towers. With the, with the interstate right there to the, to the east, of course, there's a lot of, lot of call traffic from that, so. This tower gets us closer to the, Verizon closer to the interstate.
Is this going to support 5G capability?
At some point, for sure. I don't have that, I'm not privy to what their initial plans are, but I'm sure it will be 5G at some point, if not up initially, yes.
And that's, it's my understanding that 5G is a lot closer to the ground?
No. I'm not sure what, what you mean by closer, closer to the ground.
That the signals will not be up at 190 feet? They'll be more like 20 feet.
No, the antennas will be at the top of the tower. Verizon antennas will be at, at the top of the tower. One thing about 5G, and I'm not a radio frequency engineer, but, so bear with me, but generally speaking, I hope I'm not insulting anyone's intelligence, but 5G signal, it will penetrate into buildings better, but it doesn't travel distances as well. So that's another reason why they need more towers closer together, because the signal doesn't travel as far. This is why it's better, will penetrate into buildings, buildings better. It has, it's a factor of different radio frequencies. Different radio frequencies have different characteristics, you know, wavelengths and such, that allow, again, allow their penetration versus carrying distance.
All right. Thank you.
One other question on this, on Sabre Industries documentation. It's for clarification for me. I appreciate it. When I talk about failure of the structure when, when wind speeds are high enough to allow that to happen, the way I'm reading it, it sounds as though the failure would occur in the upper portion of the tower.
Correct. Yes.
Tower would not drop, but it might bend over.
Right.
So you don't expect a total?
Right. So if this is the tower, nowadays, the designs are such that they're not gonna fall necessarily in a linear fashion, so if it's 190 feet, it's not gonna land 190 feet out. Like you said, it'll crumple over, kind of like a wilted flower.
Right.
The analogy I use, yeah. And I, I lived in Louisiana for 32 years, and I saw several towers like that after a couple of hurricanes, including Katrina, so seen it firsthand.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, are we ready to land?
In the case of. Pairs here.
PB 202.
I just want to get my paper. Excuse me, Ms. Fromm. Thank you. In the case of PB 2023-4-1, I request for a conditional use to construct a cell tower at the intersection of American Way and Harvard Drive by Buell Consulting Incorporated, Zone I2. I move that we allow the conditional permit to forward as, as defined, stressing particularly the need for landscaping as discussed on the south side of the property. I would like to include the commentary that has been provided by Planning to be part of this, along with their recommendation.
Setback criteria. Who said setback criteria?
Oh, to, to. Go ahead.
Yeah.
What do you want? The excerpt. That's what this is.
No, this is.
Other information? Yeah. It says, okay, on recommendation specifically, Dave made a comment to that, that the applicant shall submit a landscaping plan to be reviewed and approved through the city's site plan review process, which provides for evergreen buffering along the south side of the fenced area. Also, other than the setback criteria, all the provisions of chapter 37 of the municipal code shall be followed.
Chip, could you include, in addition to setback criteria, because I forgot to put it in there, setback criteria and tower design, because they're doing, the code requires a monopole, and they're doing that lattice design.
Oh, okay. Great. So we would, we would, we would say that we accept the, you know, the design as submitted and justified by the structural engineer.
Yep.
At Sabre Industries.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Chip Roarum and a second by Dave Robinson. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Dave Robinson.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
All right. That is recommended for approval. Should be on the July 3 city council agenda.
Thank you. Case PB 2023-5-2, a request for a conditional use permit for an assisted living facility, nursing and compromised patient at 1975 East Court Street by Asbury, Zone C2. Will the applicant, applicants, please come forward?
I do have one last question. Excuse me, my.
Asbury.
Chair's on the side.
You were on the planning board when we approved Asbury when they built out the first time. Remember they had to keep coming back to us because of mold issues and stuff that they found? How did they lose the CUP? They can't find any record on it. That's puzzling.
Is there a way I can speak right here from a mic on the side here? Or this might be a little.
Since it's three of you, before you speak, we'll go ahead and swear you in, and then as you start speaking, you can state your name. So if the three of you would like to raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
You can state your name.
It's Tristan Daker with ML Group Architect and Design. I'm here with ownership as well as we have a civil engineer. I'm here to represent our client. This is in regards to the Asbury, Kankakee, at 1975 East Court Street. And we are requesting a conditional use permit for the operation of the assisted living facility along with a new addition to go with it. The conditional use permit for the, my understanding is that the existing facility technically doesn't have a conditional use permit. And with this, with the advent of the addition had brought this to our attention. So I guess we're asking for a conditional use for the use of the existing facility along with the addition. So to just kind of give you a quick history of the facility or summary of what the facility is right now, it's an existing four-story building, you know, off the interstate that's for assisted living. The, with the current right now, they have 56 units with 56 beds. In particular, there is a, on the second floor, it caters to residents with memory care and the, with the projections for more of those, of that population needing a place to stay. What we're proposing here is a two-story addition that connects to the existing building where it's going to have 56 units with 56 beds. And both floors are going to be dedicated to memory care. The existing building, or I'm sorry, the new building is going to connect directly to the rear of the building right now through what is an existing unit right now. The intent is that the functions of the building are all going to remain the same. So the traffic, the people who enter and leave the building, nothing's going to change. It's still going to be all entered from the front, from East Court Street. So everyone who's using the facility, who's going to be using the new addition would be, you know, entering and leaving from the front. Currently, the existing building, there is staff parking on the lot behind where there is a separate entrance for that on this corner of the building by Hammers Street. That's gonna, that's also going to remain. The, the design intent was to put the parking in between the existing and the new building, you know, with the idea of trying to be sensitive to the neighbors to the north, to the residential area. With the building, existing building being a four-story, the new building being a two-story, we're kind of creating that transition from a more commercial property to a more residential property. And then from the, we perfectly, we intentionally left the, the property to the, to the north of it with no parking. We left it for, you know, for landscaping and for grass, again, to help, you know, create a nice buffer there from, from the, from the building to the, to the residents who are living above. This is just kind of a blow-up plan of the, of the, of the new addition. What you're seeing is all along the perimeter are resident rooms. These are single-use, single-occupant units where each unit has their own personal bathroom with shower. And then the common area is in the middle. There's also an activity room on one of the inside corners. There is also on the first level, there is a fenced-in patio area that is also accessible, that is for the residents. Second floor is the same as, same as the first floor in terms of the layout. It's basically a stacked plan, meaning the rooms below line up with the rooms above. And finally, we have, oops. So I'm sorry, here was the second floor. Again, the same idea is on both floors, they are connected to the existing building. And on the second floor is directly connected to the existing memory care unit that there's, that is there right now. This represents a roof plan. The majority of this building is, all the resident rooms have their own, what they, what we call a PTAC unit. It's their own, you know, air conditioner heater that's in underneath the window that provides the fresh air and comfort for each room. But in the common areas, we have four rooftop units that are in the middle. This is kind of representing, this is a CAD drawing of the elevations. I'm going to show some renderings while we're talking about this that kind of helps it a little bit better. So again, I just, you know, I'm sure many of you are familiar with the, with this building. This is what the, the front is, looks like now. The, we are aware of that the, that the work that's going to be happening on the highway as well as on Court Street is going to involve with this front parking. None of this that we're proposing has anything to do with that, but we are aware that that is coming. So basically, we're left with a pallet on the back of the building where you, right now, where you can see it, all the, you know, all of these bays represent basically a resident unit. So what we're doing is we're going to connect it in the middle and then with that, we're going to, we're proposing, oops, we're proposing a, a new two-story addition. This is obviously the same view of the existing photo. I have one more view, kind of looking back at the parking. That's another view where you can kind of see the fenced-in patio area. You see the parking here as well as you see this part of the building here is the connector to the existing building. I'd like to touch on, you know, the pallet of finishes that we're, that we're using and why we chose them. So as you can tell, well, maybe not as you can tell, but what appears to be white on this screen, that's kind of hard to see on the, on this projection, but that's representing board and bat and wall panels. You may have seen it's very popular right now with a lot of residential, you know, with the, with the farmhouse look. And it's basically, you know, eight by, you know, it's, it's four by eight panels or taller panels with, with wood trim, vertical trim that falls along the building. So we have that in the majority of the building. And then in addition, at the connector where there's a, there's a fire separation issue between the new and the existing building, we have masonry. And the intent of the brick is to match with what's there now. So if you look at some of the existing, well, you can't really see it here, but you can see a little bit of the brick here on this existing. The idea is to have an accent, the accent for the, for the new building is the brick. So at the connector and then along the perimeter of the entire building, we have a, I'll call it a brick wainscote. But basically, that's there, kind of acts as a shield. It's there for durability. It also, it also serves as a nice backdrop to deciduous shrubs and plantings that we're planting on due on the north side. And then you have this, you can see clearly on this rendering here, this, this green area, which is basically the setback, you know, from, from the residents across. Parking, we touch on the parking, let's... You can see it with this plan here. One of the things that we had to do with this situation is obviously meet all the accessibility codes. So, so along with that, we have two fully compliant accessible stalls. And then we've maxed the parking that's, that's available in between the, in between the new building and the existing building. One parking lot is accessible from Hammers. The other parking lot is actually accessible from the alley that the property next door shares and it is, and that's, that is to remain. Kind of go over the landscaping plan here. So again, you can see, you know, we're showing shrubs and various plantings around the whole perimeter of the building as well as we're proposing new trees along East Oak Street as well as Hammers, which right now, I don't believe there is any there now. One thing that is, I won't say a challenge, but it's a, it's a situation that as the design team has been involved with is the whole site slopes from the west to the east down. So we had to, we've got a small retention, sorry, a small retaining wall along here on the back that we've designed into it. And so that's, you know, that's other part of the challenges is to find a place to connect to the existing building, you know, at the same level. And again, we're trying to keep, you know, with this population, we're accessibility, you know, people tripping around like that, we want to keep this as flat as possible. So between both floors, you know, we've maintained that connection. And then the idea is that the, the main building is just one level on the first and second level. We want to eliminate as many steps as possible. There are the Egress stairs as well as an elevator serving the space. And then again, in the center, it's a, it's a common space. I think with that, if there's any questions, we would be happy to answer.
You mentioned that you were sharing the parking lot with the neighbor?
Not, no, not the sharing of the parking lot. It's the, it's the alley, it's a, the, the existing alley has, it's a...
Between the two buildings.
Between this building and the building to the west of them, there's a north...
It's an easement, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's a...
One's north-south.
Yeah.
So the existing, yeah, this, this existing alley here between this building and the next building, our neighbor, it is an existing easement that both, both properties share.
I was having trouble reading, this is Chip Roarum, I was having trouble reading the landscape schedule.
Okay.
Could you take us through that a little bit? See what the shade trees are and what the, what the plantings are that are near the, near the building?
Sure. I know you're not a landscaper, but you might know a little more than I do. Our landscape architect's not here, so I just have my civil engineer.
You know, it's just, it's tiny.
It's tiny, yeah. I mean, we have, I mean, we're, the timing is really good because we're like, we're to the point where I almost have a full set of drawings to be submitted to the city. And of course, the landscape drawing is, you know, it's a 30 by 42 sheet, so everything will be legible.
Well, I would think, you know, since it's on Oak Street, it'd be probably appropriate to plant oak trees. I just don't know what's there, you know?
Yeah, let me, let me look here, I can, I can find that.
The trees proposed are autumn blaze maple, skyline honey locusts and ivory silk tree lilac.
So the, the trees on the parkway way out are maples?
That's what's proposed, yes.
Yeah.
And honey locusts.
Yeah.
I, I, I...
There's plenty of space for an oak though, so if you're going to make that suggestion, we could make that suggestion.
We could go with swamp whites and that plenty of... The reason that I'm saying that is that, you know, this is a big mass, a big linear mass. And I would, I would like to see, these trees are about 50 feet on center from what I can tell, on the shade trees. I'd like to see them a little bit closer together so that they canopy together to be able to soften the mass of the building to the single houses to the north. And yeah, I would like to see oak trees.
And what are the shrubs?
Let's see. We have dwarf, honeysuckle, rolo sumac, blue muffin viburnum, and purple lilac, certain type that I can't read the word on, I'm sorry. And there's also some dense yews in there.
Some what?
Dense yews, Japanese yews.
Oh, densiformis?
Actually, tautum.
Just as an aside, I wouldn't use any viburnums. The viburnum beetles are here in force now. We're going to lose all the viburnums in this area.
The concept of the intent is, will that be available to the oilers, we know, like someone already taken as well?
Yes, we're of nets.
You know, what, Deb Terrell here, is it Mr. Baker?
Daker.
Daker, okay. Mr. Daker, sorry. What Chip was saying about having more trees to create more of a canopy to soften the view of the building, it seems to me like you've got a couple of choices here and the trees would probably be the least expensive. There isn't enough brickwork on this building to really make it look good. I would personally, and I think everybody else would like to see the brickwork go halfway up at least, but you could also soften that look with more trees. So those are two options that we could consider, or both would be wonderful. But the building looks very stark to me and with the window air conditioning units and that board, it's, it basically looks like a pole barn. So I would, I would like to see more brick. I'd like to see a nicer look because you do have people living directly across the street that have to look at it every day.
I, I saw from TESCA some suggestions about like doing the ends with brick, maybe a center portion with brick.
Okay.
To break it up, you know, on a full height.
Yeah, anything that would break up that stark exterior would be welcome.
Okay.
Yeah, that's scary in that picture to me, honestly, too. Our comment's really based upon the design of the existing building, right? The building's got brick on the end and it's fairly just concrete, essentially painting concrete, I think, in the middle of it, right? So we were thinking if you had the bricks on the end, it would kind of match that. The other thing I was thinking today as I was driving in off of 57, as this site is pretty visible off of 57, at least today. Now, I didn't look at the ramp design that's going to be when they reconfigure it, but if the, the frontage on the east side of the building kind of matched the existing, I think that would be nice.
How long has Asbury been there? How long has this facility been?
Seven years now.
Seven years?
Seven years. And the previous owner was...
Accidentally.
Has it had more than two owners? The reason I ask is that, uh, there was a conditional use permit, I don't know where it went, but there was, because I remember it.
There should be.
When we first approved this facility, uh, the landscape ordinance was brand new at the time. And conforming to the new landscape ordinance was an issue for them, and it just happened that, at the same time, the garden club, one of the local garden clubs, was having a tree planting initiative, so we gave a number of trees to them to help facilitate that landscape requirement. And unfortunately, most of those trees died. But I do see that since then, the landscape seems to be more cared for than it was previously. It, it seems to be, if not perfect, at least thriving. Do you have an irrigation system? Do you have a groundskeeper? What is the plan for keeping the landscape good?
So, we, we don't have an irrigation system, but we do have hose bits along, among the village to, so they can water those areas.
And you would be using gator bags and all of the appropriate materials to... Would you be using sod in this setting?
Uh...
Because sod has to be watered.
No, that's, that's decorative for us there.
On the plan, it's just labeled lawn grass, it doesn't really say cedar sod.
Well, either one would need to be irrigated.
For sure.
Because like, in a year like this has been, you know, you would lose your investment. I'm very happy to hear about additional memory care beds in the area. I happen to know how important that is, and I think this is, this is going to be a tremendous resource for the area. But I think all too often, we think, oh, you know, there's just a few houses across the street, it's an existing facility, it's a parking area now, who cares, you know? But I care very much, and I want the people who live in that neighborhood to have something there that they can be proud to look at.
For sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
How soon are you thinking about starting construction?
So, our, our goal is to start, uh, uh, digging before winter.
Before winter?
Yeah, so this fall, so, you know. Um, right now, uh, besides the local, uh, reviews, we're, um, we're in the process of getting HUD, the HUD lenders' approval, which is also an extensive review of the drawings.
How about IDPH?
Huh?
How about IDPH?
IDPH would be part of that as well, yeah.
All right. Um, yeah, I, I, just to reaffirm some of the concerns over exterior materials, you know, is the existing brick that you're proposing going to be a four-inch veneer or a three-quarter inch veneer? Have you decided?
It's, the intent was to match what's there on the building now, which is just...
But you do it with it?
What's that?
You do it anyway?
Yes.
And I don't know if they, uh, the change of the thickness, if you were proposing in your cost estimates, is four-inch veneer versus three-quarters veneer, whether or not...
Well, we, it's, we're using a four-inch veneer. Yeah.
Because I, you know, for me, I would say all brick would be really good. But I realize what you're trying to do, but it would, it would look substantial, and, you know, there you are, as far as maintenance.
Yeah, and, you know, honestly, the brick on the existing building is, you know, some would, some would say it's kind of dated, um, so you kind of have to be careful about, you know, whether, you know, if you use the existing and put it on a new. So, that's why we're kind of introducing, you know, that's why we were coming up with the board of that, which is a wood, you know, product residential, and we were trying to, you know, have something that contrasts the existing, the existing building rather. Because the building right now is, is basically, you know, e-flips and stucco, um, you know, it's a commercial building, so we're trying to, you know, get it down to more materials that are more residential. So, I, but I, you know, I agree with your, uh, your comments about the brick, that is a valid concern, uh, and we will definitely, uh, review that. I mean, we, we did, we did, we did a lot of studies, obviously, and we thought, you know, the, you know, sometimes when you break a building, it kind of gets too busy, so there's a, there's a balance.
Agrees.
They, they, you know, the existing neighborhood was down after World War II, started getting built, about Mary Preston started getting built in the late forties, Romy Hammers was the developer behind it, and, uh, there are substantial quantity of brick in there. But at the same time, there was also, uh, the colonialism, the colonial revival was going on, that was present in that neighborhood, a lot of public siding in there, a lot of traditional details, shutters, white, all that kind of stuff. Looking at how that, how that fits in the neighborhood, right through the, see it, you know, to see what we can do to be able to, uh, respect that, and blend in respectfully to that as well, in, um, during the exteriors. But one other thing that might be helpful is to change color from the light color, or, um, to be able to diminish the mass of the building. So, again, you know, like I said, having snapped my fingers, I'd say, should be all right.
If I could, uh, switch gears here to a public safety issue, did I hear you say that all exit and entry to the building is at the front?
For like, the residents, for, I mean, the main visitors and guests, I think, of East Court Street.
Where are the exits and entries in case of an emergency?
Oh, yes, absolutely, there's emergency exits throughout the building.
There is.
Oh, yes, yes, around, yeah, there are exits out of the park, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does the staff have to go around the building and come in through the front, or the...
So, there is a, uh, I'll, I'll bring it back up here, there is a... There's another entrance, you can see right here where the cars are here, that's like, right now, that's, it, the, the, the parking lot's in the rear of the building now, uh, for those who, uh, where staff does occasionally use that, they come in, um, from this entrance here, and we're, we're maintaining that. There's also another entrance, uh, from the parking lot on this side, uh, that connects to the connecting as well. So, yeah, there's, so, everyone who's using this building can get back and forth, uh, between the parking lot, without having to go around the property.
Unless I'm mistaken, you have fewer parking spaces planned than we would ordinarily require?
That's correct.
Um, do you expect to lose parking across the front when the project begins? The I-57 project?
So, we have looked at it a little bit, let me get my... And basically, what, the, the majority of the property right now, there's, is a, is a large turnaround there. And basically, parking is along the, you know, facing Court Street. So, with this going up, what's going to happen is we're going to lose the, the, the large turnaround. So, in theory, uh, is that we're going to try to, we're going to maintain the parking that's there in the front, um, but lose the, lose this large, um, turnaround. So, it, this, this is all going to have to get reworked, um, and we do have ideas of how to do that, too, you know, to update the accessible parking. So, we're anticipating to be above the same.
Okay.
Yeah, on the parking issue, I mean, a code would say they should have somewhere in the range of ninety, ninety-two spaces. However, um, if you go out there and look, at least I've never seen a lot even close to full myself, I mean, there might be some holiday weekend where you have a lot of guests, and maybe you've got some parking jam, but generally speaking, uh, the current parking lot isn't hugely utilized, and the new facility is focused on memory care, the residents certainly aren't going to be having cars, so...
Right.
I'm comfortable with the amount of parking that they've got proposed.
Another landscape question, um, it, it looks, based upon the, the foundation plantings, that it might be your best interest to pull them away from the building a little bit further, so as they grow, they're not jammed up against the walls. Uh, they're pretty snug against that, which is going to require additional maintenance to be able to keep it that way. Pull them out, I think it might be, yeah, softening of the building, and allow them to get slightly larger, and, uh, have, you know, more natural appearance.
That's also a dry zone. The closer you are to the foundation of a building, the less likely it is that the plants will receive rainwater.
Right. And I know our land... Yeah, I know our landscape architect, uh, drives that in various locations, where it's, it's not just plantings, it's, you know, sometimes it's a stone bed or something.
Well, Mike, in relation to recommendation number two, is that going to stay, are you going to reword that? We recommend approval number two, how, with the brickwork.
Well, I guess you guys need to figure out how you want to phrase that. We've talked about multiple different options right now, uh, and I, quite honestly, I'm not sure where we're landing. Uh, I know we want to enhance the architectural appearance, Chip is suggesting he'd prefer all brick. Uh, we suggest a brick on the ends and maybe in the middle, um, Deb, you've talked about some, you know, going halfway up with bricks, so I don't know that we have a consensus yet in terms of what you're recommending, so I think that's a good question.
What if we were to say that we require them to, um, expand and enhance the brickwork to soften the appearance of the building per an agreement between the planning department and Asbury? Allow you to hash it out.
Be comfortable with that, I'm good with it.
They know what the, you know, the, the costs incurred would be, and the, um, you know what, but look, you're the architect, not us, well, Chip is. But, you know, so, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable, as a planning board member, recommending anything too specific, but I think I would like to include in our conditions that you've come to some agreement between the two parties on enhancing the brickwork.
And just FYI, so you know, that they have applied to the city for potential tax increment financing assistance, haven't made a final decision on it, but there is a request then, so if the city provides funding, then we have additional controls there as well.
Any other questions, comments? I'll open the public hearing. There's anyone in the audience who would like to speak for against this case, should we come forward? Come forward to the microphone, please. Raise your right hand, say your name.
My name's Roosevelt Green.
Raise your right hand, please.
Right.
You're right.
Totally.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could state your name, please.
Roosevelt Green.
All right, Mr. Green, go ahead.
Okay. I, uh, we own private nineteen sixty-seventy, so old street, uh, about fifty, been there, what, we own it for fifty years. Uh, the hotel was there, and they used to offer the community something. The kids would go swim, as long as they brought their parents. Uh, when, when business come to the mi- community, they should bring something for the community. Um, uh, we are a community of very little, uh, to choose from. All right. Another problem I have, the color coordination, can, can you get the colors closer to the existing property? We, we have to, that color, uh, it, it's extended to...
One of the comments they had was to, um...
The color is, is, you know, it's a lot. Uh, but, so, the, those are my, my, I didn't have a number right on with the, the one block, uh, street.
Okay.
Uh, required, okay, uh, not a lot of traffic. Uh, there are kids, families, family, they're there. How would this affect that, 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 that square street? Can you continue to give me?
Yeah, I was, uh, am I testing?
Uh, Mr. Daker, if you could grab one of the mics and speak into it for the recorder.
Sure.
It's difficult to hear.
Sorry. Um, so, uh, again, the idea is that, you know, main visitors coming and going, um, the, the, the residents, uh, who primarily are shuttled around, that all happens in front of the building, that is, the state's thing. Um, right now, the existing building has a parking in the rear, which is basically used for basically overflow parking, from what I understand, I, I don't, I know the neighborhood as well as you, for sure. Uh, and really, what we're proposing here is, is no difference. Um, so that the, the access from the easement, I know you recently, you know, closed off the street on Hammers, um, but, uh, you know, they only, only, uh, again, uh, from, I believe, everyone's lived here, uh, multiple times, my understanding is the parking in the rear is not used as nearly as much as possible. And I go for the, the, we're trying to keep all the activity away from the neighborhood, trying to keep it close to the...
And that's not a good, okay, that's not a good thing. Uh, we want the neighborhood involved, we want, we want, we, anything coming to the neighborhood, we would like to see it's, as part of the neighborhood, like I said. The hotel, help, uh, to bring us as a community in it, and we felt, we felt that we owned something, it is my own lab, okay, okay, it is our lab, and, uh, God knows, uh, the neighborhoods and, and the likeness of it need to be changed, you know, uh, that, 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 those buildings here, there you go, and, but, uh, to bring something in as an asset, I saw, uh, wouldn't be, uh, when you could do it better, but, but I saw it there, it just doesn't match, doesn't match.
I think that's the consensus we're hearing, so, no, we're not going to, we're not going to fight that. We're going to, we're going to try to make everyone happy, who's a something that's proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right, the public hearing is closed. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Um, I have a comment, speaking to Mr. Green and his concerns. It appears from, you know, what you have written here, that your staffing is only going to increase by five employees, so there won't be a significantly larger population of people going in and out. Uh, the memory care residents that have Alzheimer's and dementia and so forth, they're not going to be outside, they're not going to be running around the building, and with only an increase of five staff members, it's basically not going to change.
Mr. Green, you, you've lived there for fifty years, you probably remember when it was Howard Johnson's.
Yeah. And what I'm saying is, it was difficult to hear you all speaking, because everybody, well, everybody lives there, the mind will be, compared to you, it's being communicated. So, I just address some of the issues that... All right. Commissioners, are we ready to let...
I am.
Yeah.
I am case PB twenty twenty-three five-two, the request for a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of an assisted living facility at nineteen seventy-five East Court Street. I would like to recommend to city council that we approve this petition. I would like to attach the... I would like to attach the findings as set forth by the planning office. And I would like to include the following conditions. The first condition, that all requirements of the City of Cankey Fire Department, the Cankey County Health Department, and the City of Cankey Code Enforcement Division shall be satisfied prior to commencement of the business operation. Um, number two, I think I'm gonna go with the original wording from the, uh, uh, planning board staff and say that the building facade should be enhanced by providing brick on the east and west-facing facades and wrapping brick around the corners. Some brick in the center of the north elevation should also be provided to help break up the long facade. And number three, increase the number of trees in the landscape plan and include some oak trees.
Second.
We have a motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Dave Robinson. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Dave Robinson.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
That's recommended to the city council for approval.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. What about you, in this, for this, for this, of that building, what?
Yes.
I think I had some fried clams going back and forth to school one time there.
Case PB twenty twenty-three-dash-five-dash-three, a request for a conditional use permit to allow special waste disposal LLC to treat and transfer non-hazardous special waste at thirteen sixty Penazo Road, Zone I-two.
And the applicant is... Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And do you state your name for the record?
My name is Keith Mulholland. I'm with Robinson Engineering.
Thank you. You can proceed and tell us about your case.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm here on behalf of Special Waste Disposal, who has been in operation in Cankey for a number of years already, out in, uh, Eastgate Harbor, off of Brookmont Boulevard. They're desiring an EPA permit for a solid waste management for a new non-hazardous, uh, treatment, temporary storage, and transfer facility. They currently have a facility at eleven forty-nine East Brookmont, which is at the corner, northwest corner of Brookmont and Penazo Road. At that facility, they currently handle both solid and liquid non-hazardous waste. They are looking to cre- to construct a new solid non-hazardous waste facility on the east side of Penazo Road across from the existing property. By moving the solid waste out of that building, it'll improve efficiency. It'll give them a little bit more capacity for increased demand. And from an operations point of view, having the liquid and solid, uh, in different facilities will, will increase the, uh, production of each of those lines. The existing facility is one acre in site, in size. There is a open front covered storage on the northwest corner of the property, which the applicant plans to leave. On the southwest is a smaller, uh, brick. It has an office, a restroom, and a little bit of work room inside. The intention is to keep both of those structures on site and add a new building, which will be at the east end or the back of the property, which is a little over eleven thousand one hundred square feet. In the new building would be two waste disposal pits. Uh, there is no sanitary service intended for this building, so there's no, there's no bathrooms in it. There is facilities for people to work in there, but as far as a restroom for that site, it would be in that office building at the southwest corner of the property. So, there's no sewer service. If there's any issue with any of the material coming in, it will not discharge into the village's collection system. Uh, there will be a water service line from their existing office building back to this, just with some hose bibs for cleaning purposes. Again, no restroom facilities are intended. This non-hazardous treatment of solid waste is the same process that is currently in operation at their Brookmont and Penazo Road facility. There is no change in the treatment process. There is no change in the materials that would come in or the methods that they use to treat this material. Uh, they typically receive non-hazardous petroleum or oil-impacted soils, non-hazardous oily sludges, uh, oil-impacted absorbent materials, or sometimes a slurry or sludge with solid in it. Uh, the solidification process is done with EPA-approved materials, which include, there's, there's a longer list, but it could include things like soil, lime, cement, uh, wood chips, either wood shavings as well. Uh, but each of those solidification materials is EPA-approved. Materials are brought into the site, they are treated, and then transferred off of site. There is no storage inside the building or outside of the building at this facility. It is simply, they, the material is brought in, it is treated, and it is hauled off-site. A pre-acceptance check is performed on all deliveries to the site. If there is any hazardous waste that is brought to the site, it is rejected and they will not treat it. Operation will normally be on Monday through Saturday from six AM to six PM, as they currently have. There is exception on Sunday. If there's a special case, they might make it, uh, they might have a special acceptance for a load on Sunday. But generally, it's Saturday through Monday work. They estimate that they'll be able to treat approximately twenty-five thousand cubic yards of material annually. Again, that will depend on what the market has or, or what, uh, what people have available for them to work on. Uh, they do plan as they currently do. They, they try to hire local. If they have enough work generated, they will hire a truck driver locally. If not, they try to use local truck forces in their operations. Part of the process of this is the, the conditional use permit for this facility. The civil and building plans are being worked on currently. When those are prepared, those would be forwarded to the city for review and go through the process for that as well. Currently, the design for the front of the building, this isn't, uh, this is more of an industrial-type building, but there's four overhead doors on the front. One of them, the north end, will be down a ramp to a dock for loading off of trucks that way. Uh, the materials are typically brought in. It could be through a vector truck. There could be cubic yard totes, barrels, uh, cubic yard boxes. Material comes in different forms, so they do have a loading dock at the one end, but the other three doors are grade. This, again, eventually will have to go, if it does get through this board, it has to go to city council. There has to be an EPA permit attached, as well as a, uh, residence, an ordinance that will be passed by the city council. That gets submitted to the EPA for permitting. We have to also submit to stakeholders. And the stakeholders in this situation would be the state's attorney, the county board chairman, every municipal clerk within three miles of this facility, and I am missing one. Who is it?
Karma.
Everybody in the legislative district that serves this area. It does not have to go to Karma. There's no sanitary service for the building, so there won't be any permit through Karma for this. There's no chance for this material to get into the wastewater system to go.
There's no water used in this process?
There's water to the building, but it's more for cleaning purposes. This is a, what they do is they'll add an absorbent to the materials that are in there. Again, let's just, uh, use sand, for example. Depending on the material that comes in, there's a number of different options that they have. And they'll add that material. It, it solidifies it. And then that material is transported off-site, either to a state-designated special landfill, or it could even be taken, depending on the material, to an incinerator site where it is converted from solid to energy, uh, production.
So, there's no wastewater involved?
Correct. Correct.
So, the water that comes into the building, Keith, goes out with the product and the thread?
It does. It, there's, so in addition to the two basins in the building, there's also secondary containment. So, if there is an issue, uh, there, there's a containment that would, that would capture that material. But yes, there is no sanitary, any water that's used, if it's whether for cleaning or if it's added to the mix for the solidification, it all gets hauled off-site when the material's removed.
Can you talk a little bit more about, about where this stuff might go? And I, you know, you've told us what kind of a facility it would be. Where are these facilities? Hey, I think you talked about this, you talked about the, the first time, but I don't recall where the stuff goes.
There's different types of landfills in our state. Some are permitted to take different types of material. Um, for example, the one that's up by Nantino can take clean construction and demolition debris. You get further north, as you get into Will County or Cook County, there's other facilities that can handle either special hazardous waste or special non-hazardous waste. This is non-hazardous waste, so it would go to a landfill facility that is permitted to take non-hazardous waste. Uh, again, it just depends on different areas of our state. But the EPA will designate different landfills as to what type of material they can accept.
I guess I'm having trouble reconciling the information that we were given the first time when we issued the permit for the original operation. Uh, Dave Tyson was here to speak, um, for the, uh, business concern. And we had a lot of questions about wastewater, because it seemed like there was a lot of wastewater involved. And, uh, representative from Karma told us that the sewer capacity there could handle it. So, I'm wondering why that was an issue then and it's not now.
The, the building that they have, that this pro- this process is occurring in right now has both liquid and solid handling. And this is just the solids handling component.
Oh, okay.
And we moved out of that. In addition, that other building does have bathrooms. There's workers in there, so there's restrooms, but it's, it's that liquid side of it.
So, that operation uses the water?
Correct. This is the solid handling side, and it uses a material that will actually absorb and harden that waste rather than liquefy it. So, this is being moved to the, and they're anticipating moving this to a different building. So, that's why there's no sanitary service with this one.
Okay. Thank you.
Have you got any questions?
Any questions? I'll open up for a public hearing.
Thank, thank you for your time.
If there are anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Seeing that there are none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, are we ready to wrap?
Yes, we can. As it relates to case PB twenty twenty-three-dash-five-dash-three, a request for a conditional use permit to allow for special waste disposal LLC to treat and transfer non-hazardous special waste at thirteen sixty Penazo Road, Zoned I-two. Based on the testimony given, we recommend approval of the request for a conditional use permit to allow for special waste disposal LLC to treat and transfer non-hazardous material at thirteen sixty Peno- Penazo Road. I so move.
That's it.
We have a motion by Dave Robinson and a second by Barry McCracken. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Dave Robinson.
Aye.
Barry McCracken.
Aye.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
That's recommended to the city council for approval then.
Thank you. Other business?
Uh, nothing else this evening, thanks.
Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
May I ask, as of today, a public session has been closed, so...
You can speak, but not...
We'll go ahead and let you speak. If you would come forward, please, and we'll swear you in. We, I have, we-
You're not gonna swear in?
I, I'm sorry that I, I'm forward, but I just wanted to make a suggestion that in the future, as was stated by Mr. Green earlier, that the city considers that any new business must be built in a residential area of the city that they bring something to offer the, the citizens of that community. And I would, you may have mentioned that in, in your summary of what was said. I, I just didn't hear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you have any suggestions, uh?
Well, like the area in, uh, Mary, press, uh, across from the, uh, fire department. There's area that next to, um, what is that? The, um, hmm...
Puzzletory?
No, it's, uh, I can't, the, the building, what's his name?
Fort America?
Across from that, uh, property there.
That's... Oh, Ed Rogers.
Ed Rogers. There's area there that could be utilized for something for children in the community. I, that would be the thing that comes to mind first of all. I just, laying there, this not being utilized. And it's, uh, kinda like an I so.
So, you're talking more in a general sense than, than they're, uh, what they're talking about? Is that correct? You're not, uh, what they're talking about, you're not talking about anything specific to that building?
No, no.
Just talking about in general?
Like, that building on the end, that's a next, well, that's next door to where the, uh, how, senior citizen place. That, you turn on that street and there's that building with that wall that's, it looks horrible. You know, it's, it's just flowers, things like that. I mean, I would, I don't know. Well, I'm not in the housing authority. It's, uh, the building that's next to the, the building that they are...
Just the one that's painted blue?
Boling Alley, right?
Boling Alley.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
I don't think it's, uh, we-
There were a couple of buildings. Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's hazardous.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And we have a motion to adjourn by Deb Terrell.
Be adjourned?
Second?
Second by Barry McCracken. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.